I begin with taking attendance, is that correct? So we'll start with Mr. Abdallah.
Here.
John Bodyudo.
Here.
Greg is not here. Angela, are you here tonight?
Here.
Hi. Alex McNauton.
Here.
Justin.
Here.
I am here. Lisa Roush.
Here.
Candace is not here tonight. Julie Stewart.
Here.
Pete Tagley.
Here.
And Mary Weber.
Yes.
Great. So we will begin with public comments. If anybody wants to speak, if they can just add themselves on to chat and let me know so I don't overlook anybody. There's anybody that wants to speak? Anyone? Going once. Okay, Cindy Meglio. Welcome. Please tell us where you're from, what town you're from.
So I'm from Bridgewater, and thank you, Jennifer. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
So as parents, we should be able to trust that our school officials are acting in our children's best interest. I think we can all agree on that. Last year, in order to attend school, our region instituted temperature checks, which was not mandated by the state, and the Newtown Health Department was not on board. I actually spoke with them personally. In fact, they contacted Superintendent Bennett to discourage it. Because it was not mandated, I was able to opt out. In order for my child to attend school, every day I had to take her temperature, send a note in, and she was not allowed to ride the bus to school for the entire year. So fast forward to this year's back-to-school meeting on August 24th. Superintendent Bennett made quite an eye-opening statement. She said, and I quote, "We will not be doing the temperature screening this year." Last year, we realized, come January, no one ever registered a temperature on the thermometer, and I think that the lowest record that we got was one of the students registered at an 83.7. We knew that they weren't dead, but that did not seem like a realistic temperature. But what it actually allowed us to do was we were able to eyeball each child and selfishly gave us the opportunity to talk to them, to check on how they were, and to make certain to check on, I'm sorry, to make certain to prep them up so they had a really nice day. So Region 12 performed a medical test with malfunctioning equipment on our children for at least six months. If a medical doctor did that, it would be considered malpractice. Are there long-term side effects of taking temperatures on the pinnah land every day? I don't know the answer to that, and neither do you. We're not medical doctors. Did they inform us that they weren't able to obtain an accurate temperature? No. Did they obtain consent to continue after they knew? No. Did they discontinue its use? No. Did they contact me to let me know that I could discontinue taking my daughter's temperature? No. Did they reverse their policy not allowing her to take the bus to school? No. So we did not know who had a fever and who did not, except for my child, who had an accurate temperature taken every day by me. I mean, that all sounds like it's rooted in science, doesn't it? There are some questions that I have remaining. Did you contact the Health Department to let them know your equipment was malfunctioning, but you're going to continue its use? This year, you're still outside every morning greeting the children. Why didn't you discontinue it last year? Why couldn't you have just greeted the children without the thermometers? As parents and taxpayers, we are entitled to full transparency and accountability. We should demand it. If you're a parent thinking, oh, well, the past is the past, think again. By instituting the temperature checks in the first place, when it was not mandated, and subsequently not informing you about the malfunctioning equipment and discontinuing its use, they have taken medical decisions away from you that, as a parent, are yours to make, not theirs. By omission, we were essentially lied to for at least six months. It's clear that this was not about health and safety, but about control and compliance. This was unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, for sharing your thoughts. And I'm sorry, did you mention what town you're from? Because I missed that.
I did, Jennifer. It's Bridgewater.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Mike Abrams, he would like to speak next. Mike, are you there?
Hi.
Hi.
Mike Abraham from Roxbury. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, great. Thank you.
All right, sorry. I wanted to, I think you have the schedule for next year on the agenda tonight. I just wanted to say a few words in reference, in support of the block schedule, notion of the block schedule. I taught at, I taught high school social studies for 37 years, and 34 of those years at New Milford High School. And about the last 13 or 14 years, we, I was able to have the opportunity to teach with a block schedule, and I found it to be a huge transformation for me as a teacher, but more importantly for our learning community. Some of the benefits that I would cite of it as a teacher was the opportunity to plan fewer but more in-depth lessons that aligned with Bloom's hierarchy of learning objectives. In other words, and to be able to, at times, touch upon several or even all of those objectives within a given class. I found that it, the block schedule having, whether it was a 70 or an 80-minute period, allowed for more interactive projects, lessons of greater duration, things such as role plays or forums, and so on. And also, on a more practical note, it allowed for students and teachers to troubleshoot whether they were, you know, writing an essay, the mechanics of writing an essay, how to get a conclusion. I just found so many benefits to the block schedule. But more than anything, the ability to sort of escape the factory feel, the high turnover of five, six, seven classes within a given day. As a teacher, that I found that I could, especially once we shifted over to Google Classroom, if I didn't have as many to take care of in a given day, I could pay more attention to detail what I posted on Google Classroom. More, you know, greater clarity. And I also found, and I think most important, that it just allowed for more teachable moments and special moments between teachers and students. It's, you know, there are a handful of, within a given year, you have a handful of moments within a class that a class remembers. And sometimes those, those moments are hard to get to. They don't just even happen by planning. Sometimes it's just the result of a good lesson. And with a 35- or 40-minute period, I found that somewhat harder to sort of occur, spontaneously occur. So I could probably go on and on, but really, out of respect for your time, I limited it to that right now. And just say, oh, actually, there is one other thing I wanted to say that I've, even right now, looking at like my son's homework this year, where there are, we are not using the block schedule. I find it a lot for students to potentially have homeworks in five or six or seven classes. And, you know, it's not making excuses or anything, but if you have three, last year, I found that teachers were, you know, giving usually 48 hours. And again, there is that emphasis on quality over quantity. And, you know, I know that not everybody would agree, and even some teachers would not agree. But again, having that lesson tends to turn around. Kids are doing worthwhile activities after school at, you know, Chapag or one of the other schools, or on something, you know, within a community. It could be a team, a sport, music, whatever. I don't know that they should have to live with that ongoing sense of urgency of coming home late every night. And I just found that there was more spacing for both student, you know, and for teachers that allowed you to take a long view, take a deep breath, and make it more enjoyable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate you taking the time. Thanks. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Before we move on?
There is a message in the chat.
Yes, we see that. Orlinsky, yes. Please.
Hi, can you see me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Nikki Orletzky. I'm from Bridgewater. I have two daughters at Chapag. I would like to speak tonight, just from my heart, about the meeting last week. I've been a teacher for close to 20 years. My husband was active-duty military, so for a while before we moved here. And I've taught in many different school systems, experienced many different, just cultures around the United States. And moving here, we found our forever home. Everything from the community to, to the school systems, this area is like no other. So I just want to compliment just how amazing this area is. Although, last week, at the board meeting, my heart was broken a little bit. And I'm speaking as a mom mostly, and as an educator. As an educator, I learned a long time ago that everyone that centers their life around children, whether it's the teacher, the janitor, the school board members, our community members, we're part of a professional learning community. We are all here for our children. And when I speak to my parents, as in me being a teacher, and I have conferences, I sit across the table with them and say, "I'm a mom too, and I, I know the shoes that I'm fitting, that you're sitting in. I might not know exactly what you're going through, but I hear you." And I don't feel like our school board members are hearing us as parents. We're coming to you with many different situations, many different viewpoints on some very heated situations that are happening in our world. And we're coming to you saying, "I have an opinion." And when we have board members that say, "I'm sick and tired of your opinions," it's very disappointing and very, it just, it breaks my heart. So I'm coming to you to say, when we have our opinions, and they might not be in line with everyone on the board's opinion, you need to hear that there are many different situations, and opinions, and viewpoints that are just as emotional as where you sit in your seat. So I'm hoping, moving forward from today on, that we can remember that. So when you're sitting in your seat, and you are feeling heated, and you're feeling very opinionated on what's happening, just know that we are sitting on our side too, that these are our babies, these are our children, and we are trusting you as board members, every time we send them to school, that you are going to love them and care for them just as much as we do. Because when I sit across the table from my parents and the students in my class, I'm doing that. I am saying, "I am here, and I hear you," and we're not, we're not being hurt. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nikki. I appreciate your comments. Anybody else that would like to take a moment to speak? Before we move on? I'm going to say no, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I need to vote to, if we're adding or changing anything?
No, you just ask if anybody would like to take anything off of the consent agenda.
Would anybody like to take anything off the consent agenda? Can you turn that down now? No? Okay, great. So we're going to approve the minutes? So can anybody make a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved, Pete, and seconded?
I was seconded.
Ooh, lots of people. It's great. Okay. So let's move on to the updates for COVID-19 and vaccinations. What, did I miss something?
We did. Nope, it's okay. So we said first by Pete, seconded by Joe, and then just want to make certain, everybody who's in favor, we just need to take that quick vote.
Oh, everyone in favor, thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Is there anybody opposed on the minutes? Fantastic. Now we can move on, is that right, Megan?
You.
Thank you for your guidance. Appreciate it.
We'll get through this together, Jen.
I appreciate that. Okay, updates on COVID. Go for it.
All right, so this is me. And I do want to thank the, the public comment. And I will absolutely own the fact that I did, exactly as Cindy had said, confirm that we didn't have accurate temperature screenings. But it is one that we did let the Department of Health know, and they had no objection to our practice. However, it is one in which I don't want to mislead, so I definitely wanted to make certain I confirmed some of the statements that were made tonight. With that said, if it's okay with the board, I'm going to share my screen, and I'm going to give us our COVID update for what we are seeing tonight. So these are our facts and figures as of today, and we're just going to do the continuation as we did last year. However, we're not going to roll the totals from last year. You know where we ended at the end of the school year. And so I want to make certain that we are giving a full picture of what's been happening in COVID in actual cases. So as of today, oh, sorry, jumped ahead on that one. This is the chart that we continue to keep. We did have one positive staff member. You'll see asterisks at Burnham and Washington Primary because it was a traveling staff member who had been to all of our buildings. I do want to thank the, the staff member publicly because, because of the effort that this person took and going above and beyond in how they were distancing and how interactions were happening within their classrooms. We actually had no contacts within any of those three schools. And something that could have easily shut down schools for quarantine was, was really handled because of strategies that were in place and going above and beyond what was even expected. So it is one that we continue to keep in. Now, that does not mean I want to start operating under the extreme, but we also appreciate when people are also taking those safety strategies and how they're exercising. We recognize this year, we have adjusted our social distancing, so it's gone from six feet to three feet. And that is between children, though. It's not between our staff members. So there go, if we have staff members who are getting within three feet for 15 minutes or more of a student, that would then create a contact tracing situation. So we did not have any contacts in, in this scenario. Right now, we do have one student COVID-positive. And we do have a number who have been put into quarantine due to outside factors beyond our school. So we're certainly tracing that. We, we are tracing, and so there's two different ones, and one that I do not keep track of on our public chart. So we keep track of who's put into quarantine, so we are providing that support. But we're also watching for any students who may be close contacts to someone who has tested positive for COVID within our schools, and watching to make certain that anybody who is put in quarantine from that does not develop COVID. Because that starts to tell us that if our mitigation strategies are not effective, as we are trying to, we are trying to gain some ground. We are trying to introduce some new activities. We are trying to put back some more field trips. We are trying to figure out ways that we can safely operate. But that also comes with closely monitoring. So as we start to introduce one variable at a time, it helps us to make certain that we are not going too far too fast to putting our schools into any kind of a compromise shutdown, but also making certain that we're watching for how opportunities are safely playing themselves out. So things that we just want to make certain that we continue to, to support is, we do use the CDC travel restrictions. I know that some people, especially if they are vaccinated, there's different travel restrictions than those who are unvaccinated. So making certain that people continue to use the CDC guidelines, because that is certainly what we look at when we're deciding how students or staff members can return to school, so that's very important. I'm also very proud of our partnerships with our Departments of Health. I talked about at our last meeting that New Milford is offering testing on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Fridays in the morning for free of charge, so which is also helping us for anybody who may have some COVID symptoms. We are able to direct them to a place to get tested. But also, we're working with Newtown Department of Health for some of those mobile vaccination clinics. We had the first mobile vaccination clinic that we were able to share with our community members, and that happened on Roxbury back on September 9th at the Senior Center. But they're willing to partner with us to any events that are out there. Again, this is not to force anyone into their decision, but it is absolutely to make available to those who do want to access a vaccine. Again, stated, we did have one member who had breakthrough case. Again, it was their attention to safety and strategies that really helped keep our school open. And so I appreciate when those extra steps are taken. We recognize that that is a gift and not always the expectation. But again, recognizing that safety is always how we're going to conduct ourselves. And I do know that we have been asking families to even mask up when coming to our building to get our students from the campus. And I know, again, this is that extra step that we're asking, but it's also one in which we want our students to know that they are supported, that when they are on campus, they are safe at all times. We know that there's mixed levels of the vaccination and unvaccinated. And we also know right now, at some of our buildings, we are hearing a lot of families who have some exposures. And so in order to be able to maintain safety, it is the steps that we're taking to ask people to mask up within the building with, as they approach our building and get onto campus. So I can say that our students have come into school. They are doing very well. We opened up the mall this year again, which is very exciting. And if you think that just standing around in a corridor, you know, with that three feet of social distance is not a big deal, ask any kid from Chapag. It's a big deal to be in there. It's a big deal to have some of these opportunities to just interact. And whereas we're monitoring for safety, we are promoting socialization as much as we can. We recognize the social, emotional support that our kiddos need. Again, as we introduce all of these opportunities, that also comes where, as we watch for any potential exposures, we are certainly keeping our data, being good stewards of our practice. So if any changes need to happen, we are well aware of the changes that need to be made. So we are trying to introduce opportunities as, as they exist. Update on just some of our numbers for children's ages 12 to 17 with vaccination rates. Roxbury did increase a little. They went from 48% to 50%. Washington went from 88% of children 12 to 17 being vaccinated to 95%. And in Bridgewater, it actually dropped from 60% to 57.8. And if you ask, "How does it drop?", we always have kids who have birthdays. So it is the increasing numbers, and I'm certain you're going to see a lot of fluctuation with Bridgewater, and it's not so much the choices, it's just smaller populations can really change some of those percentages in big ways. So we'll continue to watch for that. But at this point, are there any questions that people have regarding the COVID update at this time? Well, then, that's it for me, Jen, so we can go into the vice chairwoman's update.
Great. Well, I'll make mine really short and sweet. So just to piggyback on what Megan said, that Region 12 had a great opening, which is very excited. It was really wonderful to see so many pictures being shared of happy children going back to school, to see their friends and their teachers, so that's a huge success. And I just wanted to just take a moment to, just say how fortunate we are in Region 12 to have an amazing faculty. Everyone working together to make a seamless return to school between teachers, paras, custodians, bus drivers, office staff, and administrators. I just think we are so fortunate to have such an amazing group of people lead our students. So I just want to give a huge shout out to everybody. And I'm just so excited going, driving into town, going to work, and seeing all these buses driving around and kids getting on the bus. And I just, you know, think the bus drivers are an amazing group of people that make sure that our children get to school safely and get home safely. So I just want to bring a huge shout out to them as well. So thank you.
All right.
And it's your turn.
It is. So for the superintendent's update, and I'm going to tell you, Jen, I'm just going to piggyback off of what you said regarding our bus drivers. I don't know if you've heard in communities around us, there are other school districts right now that do not have enough bus drivers to get the children to school. They are making phone calls at 10 o'clock at night, saying to people, "They're not going to be able to get their kids to school the next day." We have not run into this problem as of yet. I want to absolutely applaud All-Star and their efforts for recruiting, as well as retention, and how they're operating, because our, our children have been able to get to school. Not only have they been able to get to school, we've been able to get to athletic events. And that is because of the availability of the bus drivers. If those conditions change, then we're not able to continue to operate in the same manner. So it is one that we certainly want to thank. So, so I appreciate you saying that. And, and also, Mary.
Actually, Megan, I was just talking to my husband about this a few weeks ago, when you see on the, the news that there's a shortage of bus drivers. The fact that you paid the, the bus drivers, you decided that that was a good idea. I think that's one of the reasons why we have our bus drivers today. They know we care about them. And so they stay on with us. And I think that has a lot to do with your decisions. So thank you.
No, Mary, I'm going to pass that applause along to Nicole, and I think it was the foresight to recognize that it's the relationships that we built. And I will tell you, it is the relationships our drivers have with the kids. And I think I can talk to all of the parents who are on this call right now. They know the bus drivers' names. Those bus drivers know their kids. They know their stops. There's the interactions. It's the relationships. I know that I talk to Bob often, who cannot wait till he gets kids back and can't wait for field trips. And there's an energy they get, but that only comes from the relationships. And, and you're absolutely right. It is something that cultivated and with the respect that was given, especially during some really tough times. And to say that we're going to invest in this, I, I do agree. And so, Nicole, thank you for your foresight and, and relationship building.
Thank you, Nicole. That, it was, that was a great idea. Just great. Thank you, both of you.
So I want to also thank all of our amazing staff members and students. I think this year, it's not operating out of fear, it's operating out of respect. And I know that some people think that, you know, it's being afraid of COVID, but I think it's this healthy respect. It's a respect for one another. It's a respect for how we're operating. And I think when you operate as a community and protective of one another, it's not out of fear, but it's out of care. And so I just, I've watched even some of the bumpy moments that have happened, because I'm going to tell you, no return to school is absolutely perfect. But what I hear is, our kids are so respectful and happy to be moving through classes this year. Our middle school students, whereas before they were in one room and we rotated to them, now have some freedoms. And they're respectful of those freedoms. And they're respectful of the fact that, you know what, other people may have health conditions that they need to be protective of, and they are respectful of how they're interacting. And so we are continuing to work out any of the hiccups that we have come into. And the beautiful thing about this is, most of our kids don't recognize our, our own things, where we say, "Ooh, maybe that, that transition lasted too long. Oh, that dismissal was taking too long." And we're noticing those 10 minutes pile up where they're not. But we're continuing to work through to make certain that we've got the most efficient, functioning, successful school year. And with that said, we are going to be sending out the test scores for the families regarding smarter balance. Those will be coming to families. It is one in which I'm going to say, this is not the test to look at your child and say, "What did you do?" This is certainly the test to say, we are looking as a district to say, "What do we need?" This is not where judgment is coming on how the results are, but it is forming our way that we have to respond to what happened to COVID. Our students missed out on learning opportunities. We see these test results as a reflection of the district and not the child. And inasmuch as we did better than other districts who were not in person, we did not do the way that we typically have done in the past. But that is, again, the moment that we But that is, again, the moment that we learn and grow and we adjust so that way we can be better at this going forward. COVID recovery is not a sprint, it is a marathon. And we need to make certain that we recognize this year, we're going to get a little bit closer to what we were able to do in an entire school year. And next year even more so. But that comes with how we accelerate the learning opportunities for our kids. And that is something that we're doing. So some fun news, because after you talk about testing, you really feel like kind of blah and dirty. So I want to talk about the fact that our horses have come back. Well, one of them that we know very well, Gulliver is back. He was with us last year and has returned for his second year at Chapag. And Morgan did not return to us this year. We decided we needed a horse with a little bit more fire in its belly. So we have number 200. I promise we will change the name, but for right now, we have number 200. And this is a smaller horse, very muscular, very athletic. So we are excited as our children learn to work and handle different horses at different abilities. Our barn manager continues this year as well as our agri-science team. We have brand new floors in, Don has made sure and all of that went to plan. And so the barns look absolutely beautiful. And now with horses in it, it looks even better. Our sheep are not anticipated to return for another two months, but everything is ready for their return. And we know that we have the gradual increasing of animals as our, as we continue to grow. So I'm hearing that new species are going to be introduced. And because I'm really not one who's going to do any spoilers at this point, I'm going to say, stay tuned. And we will have our students themselves share the news of who we welcome to our campus. I do also want to share with you, I know that there were some concerns and we had talked in the past about copper levels within the barn and the water, what was happening with the the copper levels in our water in the barn. I can say that we have worked very closely with both hydro technology, the water systems. Don was regularly taking samples. We had water flows going to make certain that we were getting the right microbes to coat the pipes. And at this point, our copper levels are 10 times below the the limit. So we are in a very good place as now we stabilize the conditions and recognize how much water flow we need. But the wonderful thing about this is even though that was something that was very nerve wracking for the adults, it was great learning for our kids. And I have to applaud our agri-science team who takes every challenge and opens it to learn with our children and alongside thereof. So they were getting experiences that no other agri-science school was getting because we invited them to be part of the solution. And that, I think, is a testament to we really are a research facility. And sometimes action research is not fun and gives us heart attacks. But I can also say what it does do is it gives our students a very rich understanding of what is happening within their school. Other things that have happened is that we had our three elementary schools who had some wonderful meet and greets and ice cream socials that have occurred. I appreciate all the extra efforts that our PTOs have been going through this year. You have to know, in working with our Department of Health, our PTOs are actually in charge of contact tracing during these events. And whereas we're not going to abandon them in any way, shape or form, we will certainly give them support. There is extra pressure. And so for them to figure out strategies, working alongside with us to make certain these events happen is a testament to them, to their commitment and doubling down efforts to make certain our kids have joyful school school learning. So I need to give a huge shout out to our PTO officers. And I know we've made it harder, but you are making it more rewarding for our kids. And we just, we're very, very thankful for that. And with that in mind, and working a little harder and digging on a little deeper, Chapag is welcoming the idea of homecoming. It may not look exactly the same, but it will be full of school spirit. Mr. Shels has talked about pep rallies and how he's going to do it safely, but also talking about how do we introduce the ideas of bringing back some of those food trucks safely? The booths for the students safely and forthcoming a dance safely. So again, we're we're getting ourselves into the, how do we move this forward? We move forward with respect, not fear, but to say that we're going to make certain it is done with calculated risks. And so we are very excited about some of these things. Mr. Shels, did I forget anything? Did I miss anything, sir?
No, you said that very well, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you. So I also want to recognize we have some leaves of absences that are coming up this school year. Sarah Curran, who is the booth interventionist, will be out from October ninth to January third. We do have a long term sub and I introduced Ms. Schneider, who will be covering for that position. We have Amanda Phoenix, who will be going out January third through April fourth. We will be looking for that long term sub for the ELA position. And Dara Ray, who had her baby yesterday. So we are very excited and she will be out until November 29. So the other thing I'd like to notify the board of is that we will have a trip to the Brooklyn Museum of Art in Brooklyn, New York for our 12th graders. This is happening on a Saturday, but this is just, we want to make certain you are aware that this is.
We never said you were.
Okay, and that concludes my update, Madam Vice President.
Um, thank you. Next is Treasures Report, John.
Yes, good evening. Although Alex finished the FNO meeting seven minutes early, I was eighty seven minutes late. So what I did manage to touch bases with Nicole and she she gave me a few things to talk about. More specifically, the roof and water tank project for for Chapag Valley School is nearing completion. The water tank was paid for with 2021 budgetary funds. And on both projects are within the budget, which is good news. Pete Lawler, the agri-science mechanical teacher, received a $5,000 grant from FFA to support the rebuild of an antique tractor by the Ag students, which should be very exciting to follow the the progress on. I don't know if it's a John Deere or Massey or whatever, but yeah, it's very, very good endeavor. Both the increases to the 1% fund from 1% fund to 2% fund was approved and in place by the state legislature. And for that's for the Capital Reserve Fund. And the increase for the Ag Science per pupils, state grant, an increase of $1,000 to 5,200. So that's going to increase the Ag coffers quite a bit. I only one week into the school year on the financial report, which, you know, isn't very telling, but there are three categories that are a little bit over budget. Not by much. Well, the computer tech one was thirty two point five one. Those are due to salary changes. And I think, you know, again, every year, especially when the board decides the the non-union salaries after the budget is concluded, I think it's in our best interest and the and the taxpayer's interest to see that the salaries are negotiated before the budget is put in place. So maybe that's something that we should definitely try to work on and resolve before we have seven months to do it. And let's work on getting those non-union salaries ratified before the budget is presented to the public. And that's about it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, we're up for committee reports, curriculum and education. Justin, you want to share?
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Okay, so we had, sorry, we were able to play with some of the fun toys that the elementary school students are going to be using to explore coding. I do have to say, it was, it was a blast and I sort of wish that I were back in elementary school. My, I can't wait to see what the kids do with that. It was just so much fun. So then we also had a discussion on the dress code policy. We were specifically looking to have non-gender specific language. And the other thing we were looking for is, you know, to sort of do the best that we can to remove our bias, you know, our biases as we're examining the policies. So that's about it.
Thank you, Justin. Next, Ed Advance, Joe, do you have a report?
I do not, because this is new to me and just kind of discovered this recently. But I do know that we are continuing our relationship with Ed Advance and there will be some news to come next time.
We look forward to it. Thank you. Finance and Operations, Alex.
Okay, bear with me here, this is a little complicated because we finished our meeting seconds before this one started. And we have a couple of issues that we need to bring before the board. There is a bit of a time constraint on this because we're trying to go to put out a band for financing and we need to know what's going to go into that band. Now, this item is not in the band. We, the board approved upgrading our camera system and they put in a limit of seventeen five. We have got a proposal here and it comes to just under 20,000. So we need the board to approve the extra 2,500 to get these cameras in the three elementary schools. Why don't we get the motion on the floor and then we could have discussion? I will entertain a motion if someone would like to make a motion to increase the.
Alex, we need to start by asking the board to add the agenda item. So we want to add an agenda item to increase the.
Well, let me do them all at once then. There are three agenda items that we need to put on the agenda. And if the board would vote for that, I'd appreciate it. One has to do with the cameras, one has to do with the windows in Chapag, and the other has to do with the maintenance garage. Would someone make a motion to put those on the agenda?
Well, who, 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 Mary, who else said move?
I don't know.
I did, but you can give it to Mary.
Doesn't matter.
Well, how about we give it to Julie and then we have Mary second.
And I'll second it, yeah, that works.
Okay, the motion that's being approved is to add these three items to the agenda. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye or bow. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay, motion passes now.
Alex, Alex, can you please give me that count? I can't see everybody, I need the count, please.
Oh, um.
Ten and O.
Okay, let me just, let me just read Pete, Jen, Mary, Julie.
Lisa.
Lisa, John.
Justin.
Joe, Angela, and myself.
Thank you, I just needed it for the recording.
Okay, yeah, I've got everybody on my screen so I can count them. So now that we've agreed to put this on the agenda, I would like to propose not taking this $2,500 addition out of the budget, but out of the CNR account, which has plenty of funds to do it. And basically, the original approval was for, I think, for seventeen five. And this new proposal totals nineteen, eight, twenty one and ninety cents. But I was going to round it up to twenty, twenty thousand. So if we could get a motion to approve the addition of 2,500 coming out of the CNR account for cameras, I would appreciate it.
So moved.
Mary made the motion and then.
Or whoever.
Okay.
And then John second.
Alex, the FNO agenda item, and again, I didn't attend the meeting, but says for the cameras are for Washington Primary School. You mentioned that it might be for the Roxbury Booth and Burnham as well? No, just Washington. Okay, got it.
You're right, I'm sorry. Let me just double check, yeah, they're all Washington primary.
And anyone know what what the overrun was all about or just?
It probably had to do with the running of wires.
Well, Don, do you want to speak to it directly on why we had the overage?
The proposal was over a year old and when we came in to do Washington, we did encounter a few problems and yes, Alex is pretty close. But to John's point, we did do Booth and Burnham also, they came in on target. Washington just came in a little over.
And just a point of reference, this was originally done through CNR funds to begin with. So this is just now having the entire project come out of that funding source.
Any more questions or discussion? Or call the call the call the role, who, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Sue, I will do a count for you. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Same, same tally, Sue.
Thank you.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, windows. Refresh your memory, we need to replace the windows and we need to do it in a way that does not create a asphalt, I mean, a asbestos or a PCB contamination. We got a proposal. It is not a complete, in the sense that it doesn't give the insurance information and bonding information and things of that nature. To refresh your memory, we had originally an estimate that this would cost $330,500. Well.
Before we go too far, we need to get a motion on the floor to then start the discussion. So I just want to make certain people know what they're, so they're focused around your conversation.
Okay, I need a motion to approve spending $360,400 for the replacement of windows. Do I have that motion? Julie, do I have a second? Lisa, okay, now, discussion now. Okay, um, now, discussion now. The uh, the cost of the windows has gone up.
You need to vote on the motion.
What?
Do you need to vote on that motion or no?
We're doing.
No, 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 no. Now it's discussion. So it's first, second, and then they allow for discussion, then we.
Okay, thanks.
Um, the, the cost of the windows has gone up to uh, three sixty-four hundred from three thirty-five hundred. Um, now, those numbers were just an estimate from Don. The remediation came in a little higher than he thought. Um, windows, uh, you know, there's issues with supply lines on these. Um, how we were going to, whether we're going to take delivery of them. Anyway, uh, what I'd like to do is give Don the, the authority to go ahead and buy these windows subject to him getting all the proper documentation that will satisfy both he and Nicole. Um, I probably should have had that in the motion, shouldn't I have? Uh, well, anyway, uh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at you, Megan, on the screen and I'm thinking you can see me back. But anyway, that, that would, that would be the, the idea. Um, does anyone have anything they want to say about this? Mary?
Um, I just had a question. These are the windows for Chapag, correct?
Correct.
Yep. So these were the windows that were in the original um, band that we did. So when we had approved the three million um, in this band, this was part of it. And so recognizing that um, right now, as far as the bid went, we've recognized that there's some adjustments that need to happen and so, um, and some documentation. So as Alex is saying, subject to Don and Nicole's review, we're looking to move forward.
Right, but that, that, the windows were for Chapag, is that right?
That is correct and thank you for clarifying.
And they would go in next summer. Any other discussion? Questions? Concerns? Then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand or both.
I have a question.
Aye.
Alex?
Yeah.
Can you please repeat your motion?
No.
Okay, because you wanted to add giving Don the authority to?
I want to uh, give Don the authority to enter into a contract uh, to spend three hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred dollars to replace windows and remove contaminants. Uh, I think that's it. Subject to getting the proper documentation to the satisfaction of both Don and Nicole.
Thank you.
And at that point, we are going to need a, a revised motion. So someone is going to have to make that motion. So we need to withdraw the first motion to then allow for this motion.
So those, do we need the, the per, the people who made the first motion to agree to remove it? Who seconded the first motion? Sue?
Lisa.
Lisa, will you withdraw your second?
I withdraw my second.
Uh, who is it?
Julie. Julie.
Draw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion and, and make a new motion. So move. Got it.
Which is what?
What you just said, essentially.
Well, could you repeat it, please?
Yeah.
Is Julie makes the, uh, makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that again.
Okay, Lisa. Thank you. Now, is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
So easy.
I do have a question.
Hand go up. Yes, John.
Yeah, um, it looks like that three thirty-four eight was uh, the bid in uh, on June sixteenth. So it's going up about twenty-six thousand, is that?
No, no, there's two bids. There's a bid by uh, 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 BCG. And then there, it, there's also a bid by uh, AMC to do the, their asbestos management company. So it's adding those two bids together.
Oh, so the, so, so in other words, uh, what you're saying is the, the asbestos uh, abatement is twenty-six thousand only?
Twenty-five, six.
Yes. Okay, all right, I get it.
If you add the two of them, they come to three sixty-four hundred.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other discussion or concerns? I'll call it to order. All those in favor, please say aye. Or raise your hand. Pete, I need you to move. Thank you, Pete. Okay, all those opposed? Abstaining? Once again, Sue, it looks like I can give you the names again if you want.
No, that's okay. I didn't see Justin's hand. Justin, what did you do?
Yeah, Justin, you're blacked out.
I.
Yes, there's his hand.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, my internet connection is terrible right now. Yep.
Yeah, I can see that. So. Okay.
And then the third one?
There is a third one.
He's online, so I'm gonna.
And I'm almost afraid to read this one. Uh, I would like someone to make a motion to approve uh, approve Holly Construction Company's construction.
What? You have to get off. I'm here.
I don't know who that is, but if they could mute, that would be great. Um, uh, a, a maintenance garage for six hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Before uh, any deductions due to uh, 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 I can't think of the expression now, uh, value engineering. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Uh, Jen, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Lisa, okay. Discussion. Uh, this number comes out double what we estimated it to be. Um, it is not though, it, it'd be one thing if we only found from one company, this was the number. Um, Don has gotten this number down to six-six-one, one-five-O with value engineering. Um, we went out and approached some other people uh, just to see what they would say. We got someone that came in at six fifty. If you remember, ONG came in at eight hundred. Um, it appears this number is in the ballpark of what it should cost. Um, Pete made a very heartfelt uh, uh, statement during uh, the FNO meeting that we've got this wonderful facility now and we need to maintain it. And we can't have our maintenance equipment sitting out in the snow all winter. We need to be able to get it in, worked on, and protected. Um, I realize this is a lot of money. Um, but there are other areas where we've saved a lot of money. Uh, and uh, uh, you know, I had a problem with it myself. But at the same time, I was convinced by what other people said that it's, we just have to bite the bullet and go ahead with it. Would anybody else like to talk on this issue? John?
Just have another question. For Nicole, basically. How does that sit with the uh, overall expenditures for the bonding? The three million?
We're still under the three million.
So under the three million with this uh, six uh, six ninety-nine, seven hundred thousand?
Yeah, we're making considerably less than we had anticipated.
Yeah. Thank you.
Julie?
Uh, did you say there were bids that came in at six fifty and such? And if so?
Bids. Don went out and canvassed the market and, and, and got peep, other people to say, what would you do this for? And that was, there was a number of six fifty.
So essentially, what happened was since the number was so much higher than what we had anticipated, um, I had asked on to just get a factor of what was, what was off? Was it our estimate or is it the, the bid that came in? And based on, on what we were hearing, um, the bid was not far off. We recognize the cost of supplies has gone up and we recognize the time, uh, the distance of time between when the estimate was made and when we sought the, the bid. There's a considerable amount of time that, that's happened between and obviously a lot of world factors that are impacting this uh, decision and this cost.
Does that answer your question, Julie?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I just ask, just, I, I, maybe you said this, Alex, and I missed it. What's the size of the building? And what exactly, the, what's the square footage and what exactly is it holding? Is it holding trucks? How many trucks? Like, what are we?
Describe it. Maybe, Don, maybe you'd be better off to describe the building and how it's subdivided and et cetera.
I'll do. Um, the building is sixty deep and sixty-five wide. And it is designed to hold the four um, maintenance plow truck, or three maintenance plow trucks and the, the, the fourth maintenance pickup. Um, it's designed to hold them with their plows and sanders on so that they can, they can back into the building two at a time, one behind the next. And um, those four would sit on, say, the left side of the building. And then there's a row of equipment. There's the Kubota that we, we purchased for the snow removal. Uh, all three of the uh, ride-on lawn pieces of equipment. Uh, the gator in between the trucks that, that, that make the next row. So there's two rows of trucks, the rows of gators and lawn equipment. And then there's the, a row of the um, small hand tools. The weed rackers and blowers and all of that stuff. And a small um, uh, twelve-by-eight shop area with, with just a bench, a pedestal grinder and uh, you know, a couple of tools. The building is not heated, it's just tempered, you know, so it won't freeze. And um, it's got no plumbing in it, no, no toilets, no sinks or anything like that because of its close proximity to the, to the um, school itself. And it, it'll have fire protection, no windows. Um, just a ma- uh, a uh, a six-foot-eight, a six-O by six-foot-eight entry door on one corner. And then three ten, uh, twelve-foot by ten-foot-high um, roll-up or coil doors to allow the trucks and the lawn equipment, you know? It um, slopes from the front to the rear uh, like a shed slope. So even in the rear, it has a gutter that will collect the water and drain down off the rear. So it's no frills, um, just a bare bones uh, structure.
Jen, to add to your question?
Yeah, and is it, what, what is, I mean, I, I can't believe I'm asking this question. What's the material? Is it? Oh, like, what's it made of?
It'll be very similar to the barn. Um, it, it'll be a steel um, construction inside with steel skin on it, a color of our choice.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, John.
Uh, the site? Or is it going to be sited?
Good point.
It is anticipated to go where the red shed and the gray shed are. Um, directly to the west of the cafeteria on the other side of the pond there between the soccer field and the um, uh, horse arena, the exterior. So those two sheds have um, um, outlived their useful life also. And the equipment in that gray shed is all the lawn mowing equipment or parts, a part of it that will end up in the maintenance.
And if my memory serves me, there's a sufficient paved roadway?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, this, this placement takes advantage of that existing roadway.
And I know originally, um, there was talk of uh, a little uh, ma- or, what would you call it? A, a maintenance uh, workshop and tool storage and that. Are they going to be able to perform a little maintenance on those vehicles in that building?
We, we, we perform maintenance on the, you know, the snow plowing equipment when it breaks in the winter and it gives us a place to go in and, and work on that. But typically, we don't work on the trucks. We don't change the oil and, and, you know, change bearings or anything like that on the trucks. We, we leave that to outside source. We don't have the equipment to do that. Um, you know, the, the, your, the answer to your question is there will be a little twelve-by-ten, you know, um, uh, shop area in the corner with a bench and a couple of pieces of equipment for us to maintain the spark plugs and things on the mowers and the, the uh, um, the mower blades. We change the mower blades often, uh, you know, things like that, small repairs. But we don't work on the trucks and quite often during the winter when we're plowing or sanding, a piece of the equipment will break and we have nowhere to go inside now um, to, to work on that.
Thanks, Don. It's been a long time coming.
Any further discussion? Uh, call for both. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye or both.
Aye.
I, I'm just looking down the line. I think it's unanimous. All, all those opposed? All those abstaining? Yep, those unanimous. You got that, Sue? I've lost. There you are. Okay.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay, um, as I said, uh, we just finished our FNO meeting six minutes before uh, this one started. So I have not had a chance to draw up the minutes. Um, I think that pretty well covered everything we needed to discuss. Uh, that wraps me up and I'm sorry for taking so long.
Thanks, Alex. It's okay. Appreciate it. Um, obviously labor negotiations. It's great.
I hear, he did ask if it's okay, Jen. I'll just give everybody a quick update.
Go for it.
Um, so at this point, um, we all, we drew to conclusion our custodial as well as the nurses' uh, negotiations. We now are going to be entering into our clerical negotiations. So that will be forthcoming. I think we have a tentative date on that. John, correct me if I'm wrong. I think September twenty-second was what I had emailed everybody um, for a whole date. So we will begin our negotiation shortly with our clerical par professionals.
Thank you. Uh, long range planning. Uh, Julie, anything? Uh, just very briefly, we have not yet met this school year. Uh, we will do so next week. Um, and just a short recap is we did get our summer mailer out um, probably a month or so ago and hopefully you all receive that in your mailboxes via snail mail with our new logo and such. Um, hopefully that's going to be somewhat effective. Uh, our signs, Burnham and Booth are in place and apparently there's been a delay with Chapag because of a material issue. Any update on that, Megan?
Um, you nailed it. We're waiting for uh, the construction, but we do have money earmarked for Chapag sign.
Okay. Uh, and at our next meeting, we're going to be looking at the tuition policy and also looking at a consultant to help us next year with our long-range planning process. So we'll have more at the next meeting.
Thank you, Julie. The brochure really was, it was so beautiful. Really beautiful. Yeah.
And I haven't seen Booth's sign, but uh, Burnham's is just really beautiful. So. Yeah, Facebook sort of exploded when that sign went out. So it was such pride in our community and that was so nice to see. And I, I can't speak to Booth, but um, really great. It's a beautiful sign.
It's a beautiful, it's just so classic and simple and beautiful. It's just, it's really great. So, well done. It's great.
Now, we're very proud of Booth, but Booth had some historic restrictions that we had to do. Um, Booth Free School is in historic district, so there were smaller dimensions that we had to work with, but if you look. But if you look and go by right over the entrance and awning, it is the same look where it looks almost like the book that is being opened. Same font, we use the same sign manufacturer and installer. So.
Well, I will be sure to do a drive-by. So.
Me too. Thank you.
New business and updates. This is exciting. Ben, the school opening video. I can't wait. Ben, that was fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. As always.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you, Mary. Partnership with the University of Pittsburgh, Teresa?
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Welcome to a new school year. Hope you had a nice summer, although it feels like it was a long time ago. I'm going to share my screen for my presentation. So I'm just verifying you can hear me and you do see my screen. Great. Great for those thumbs up. So it's a real pleasure for me this evening to talk about a partnership with the University of Pittsburgh's Institute for Learning and to talk about how we came to embark on this journey with them. I have to give credit to our superintendent because she did work with them several years back. And we're super excited about this initiative. First, I want to talk to you about our retreat. Every summer, the administrators have a retreat where we really come together to reflect upon the previous school year and to focus on a vision for the new school year. And just like last year, in a very thoughtful manner, acknowledging the challenges that everyone has faced and considering all the messages that we want to provide to the district and prioritize how we can move the district forward and continue the success for our students. So in the acknowledgements, we certainly also acknowledge the resilience and this collective efficacy that exists in the district. And I want to thank Madam Vice Chair for your comments earlier this evening because those comments resonated throughout our convocation. And there were major themes in everyone's speech that day. And I want to recognize those comments and share with you why they were so important. So the kickoff speech came from our Chair of the Board. And he really did acknowledge the entire community, finding a way to channel the inner strength despite adversity. And that was carried forward with the President of the Shapog Valley Educators Association, really sending a message that we're not alone. We weren't alone last year and we're still not alone and we can get through this. And a very heartfelt speech from our Teacher of the Year, where she inspired us to really think about our why and the purpose of what we do and to be our best selves for each other, for our kids and for the community. And our superintendent continued that same messaging and acknowledged that it has been very hard, but we're still focused on learning and we're ready to make this year even better. So that kickoff really brought our mission and vision together. And building this foundation for learning, knowing our why, of why we chose this career, why we serve Region Twelve, a community that we all love, and recognizing we've been working so hard with the growth mindset, all the work from Dr. Duckworth, correct myself. And we want to continue those moments of momentum and moving forward. And so the Institute for Learning, which was originally established by Dr. Resnick, a professor there, and a lot of the research she did was shared with us and we already began our sessions with them. The work is grounded in nine principles of learning. It is anchored in coaching. And what that means is they don't just give us research to read, but we actually engage in activities to take deep dives into the research and come together in developing our unified understanding. And through that, we were able to prioritize for this coming year the three areas of focus. So accountable talk and clear expectations and academic rigor in a thinking curriculum. All of these funnel students into a lens of being reflective as learners, owning their learning, engaging in their learning and helping us make sure that we're really clear in how we're instructing students so that they can succeed. And there will be additional coaching focused on literacy and mathematics with our teachers. And so it really is a partnership for continuous improvement. And I'm going to have you view a video. It's a three-minute video from Dr. Resnick in her own words so that you can get a glimpse into why we were energized to be a part of this initiative. So hopefully I can do this, you know, in like five, six seconds. Maybe a little longer, but I'm ready to share the screen.
Back when, in the early nineties, when I first started to work on standards and instruction to standards, our goal was to provide all students with the kind of education, the level of it, that once was only available to the elite in selective schools. There've always been selective schools with high levels of cognitive demand. But in the 21st century global economy, that goal of high level education for everybody is more important than ever. It's important for individuals. It's important for the society. One of the ways to reach this goal is to engage in disciplined forms of interactive discussion. This kind of discussion has always been present in the education of elites. They've always debated ideas, defended problem solutions, read complicated material and talked about it. But that hasn't been done in the bulk of schools. So if we're going to aim for everybody learning how to be a high demand thinker, a high, highly proficient thinker, knowing enough to be a thinker, we're going to have to take that kind of teaching and learning into, into everybody's schools. What do I mean by it? Well, accountable talk is talk that is orchestrated by teachers so that students learn to formulate responses to problems, interpretations of texts that are correct in disciplinary terms and, and go beyond what was actually written there. You know, just give back the answer you see on the page. Why should that work? Well, cognitive psychology suggests that when you explain things, you learn them. And so as Mickey Chi and others have shown, when you explain to yourself why some statement in a textbook is probably true, you come to understand it, you come to learn it, you process it more deeply. You remember it for longer. You can use it for more things. It pays to press students to self-explain because they process what they're learning more deeply. They can then transfer it. The, the basic idea is that the more you manipulate pieces of knowledge, the better and better you understand them, the better you remember them, the more complex your memories become and the smarter you get. In an accountable talk classroom, many kids are explaining all the time. What does all that explaining get them or get us as educators? As they read, students anticipate what's going to come up at the next step. They, they think about something internally. You can call it an internal discussion. And they build these cognitive explanations. They're always trying to understand. They're not just rehearsing that. They're not just saying back what they were told. And it's this complicated restating, putting things together, quarreling with others and also with yourself. Getting it right. That's what accountable talk is.
So I wanted to give you a glimpse at this professor who has done extensive research. And we all agree that you cannot separate deep knowledge from critical thinking. And so it's not about this isolated skill. It's really about developing the capacity to understand the world around us, to be able to interact with terminology and engage in debate with others as she explained and to really own one's learning. And so everyone's very excited about this initiative and wanted to give you a little glimpse of our journey and where we're going this year. And I do thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions. But I did think it was great that Ben captured in the opening video, you saw on the student's desk, like, I can do anything. So that growth mindset with our littlest ones, we are just thriving through all this research that we've got and helping kids to also take risks and be comfortable in taking risks.
Thank you so much, Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa. And, and if it's okay, I just even put an exclamation point on, on some of these. We, we don't want our kids to just imitate or to blindly accept things that are put in front of them. We want them to think critically in the statement of arguing and making them accountable for their thoughts. And it's okay if you argue the wrong point and hopefully you get to get the understanding of, hang on, I've got cognitive dissonance, something is not working out. And it, it deepens our experience, it deepens our understanding. And, you know, I think we know that this is our, our next level. And we have teachers who are doing this. This is not revolutionary. And actually, if you look at that video, it looks slightly dated because these are not fads. This is about having educational practices that are sound within our classrooms and to make certain that we care enough about children to give them honest feedback. It's not about making everybody feel good about their learning. It's also about making certain that we care enough about them to push them, to give them that feedback that moves them forward rather than just accepting where we are today.
Thank you, Megan. Does anybody have anything that they would like to share? Well, I appreciate the presentation, Teresa. So thank you so much. And I actually agree with you. I noticed that on the, the student's desk too. And I thought, I need one of those for my desk. So thank you. Appreciate it. Evaluating Shapog's schedule for 2022, 23. We have Mr. Schels and Mr. Croft.
Thanks for the board's attention on this matter. And of course, as part of my, listening and learning from our stakeholders. And one issue that does seem immediately ripe for consideration after listening to our students, teachers and some parents is the issue of our bell schedule. And we actually believe that the time is right to undertake a cross study of our current bell schedule and consider various alternative models that may serve our school better. And our, our current schedule, although it's served us well in many ways for a long time, does create certain barriers to teaching and learning. For example, it doesn't allow enough slots for students to take all the classes they want or need to take. It doesn't support certain events that require extended time, uninterrupted extended time, like science labs or experiments or cooking or culinary events. It doesn't really support enough time for certain interventions or for enrichment programming. It creates a certain frenetic pace for students rather than slower, more in-depth experiences. And so for all those reasons, we want to study our bell schedule and consider what next steps would be. Our bell schedule is so foundational to a learning community and so instrumental. It touches the life of every person in the building that the process you enact studying the bell schedule has to be one of the most thoughtful, deliberative and inclusive processes that a school would ever undertake. So I want to take a minute to share our vision for what that process should look like and how it should unfold so that the learning community knows that we want to be, in fact, thoughtful, deliberative and inclusive. So we're obviously going to empanel and proceed by committee. And the committee is going to include teachers, parents and students. All departments will be represented from the school. Students from the middle and high school will be represented. Union leadership will be included. Board members are invited to be on the committee, but I don't expect that and I don't propose to require that given your busy schedules, but you're certainly welcome. And I'll be soliciting interest in these various committee roles and selecting members according to the committee's needs. And then after establishing protocols for how the committee will unfold so that we can be efficient and effective, study various alternative models for bell schedules. And by study, I mean, we're going to review documents. We're going to have discussions with stakeholders and other schools which enacted various different models. Where possible, we're going to visit schools which run these different schedules. And the mission is simply to sift through the evidence and find the best fit for Shapog. All voices must and will be heard. Different departments, different stakeholders perceive different needs. Our approach has to be comprehensive. The committee will keep minutes for each meeting and committee members can report these minutes back to their constituencies and solicit feedback along the way and report that feedback to the committee. And the committee will weigh the evidence and then make conclusions to the faculty and prepare recommendations to. And the committee will weigh the evidence and then make conclusions to the faculty and prepare recommendations to the administration and the superintendent. And then whatever schedule is selected, no matter what stripe, the committee and our leadership team will make sure that we're providing teachers with the right professional growth and development needs to tailor instruction to that schedule and its cadence. And we'll inform the community by holding information sessions about the new schedule when it's enacted. So a very important process that can create a shared vision among all our stakeholders about what's best for the architecture of our schedule. Now, Mr. Croft, along with Mr. Boucher, is the heart, mind and soul of the master scheduling at Shapog. So he might want to add his reflections here.
Thanks, Don. I think that's very comprehensive. And the only thing that I'll add is that one key word is flexibility. One key word in looking at our current schedule and and what it lacks is flexibility in many areas. And that's one of the things that prompts me at least to be excited about looking at lots of different options and considering them with all of our partners.
Okay, and given how busy your agenda is tonight, we appreciate your consideration on that and look forward to what our inquiry will yield. Thank you. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Or Don or Mike?
I have one.
Don?
I just have a thought. Not sure how this would sit, but interested in taking any cues from the from students concerning the outcome.
Students will be on the committee and the student perspective is a very important part of the process. Yes.
Good.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Shin Jin. Jen, at least, I have a question. No, just just a question, just a little bit of a background question. So has because this, we've had this schedule for a long time with the bells and everything. So is this something that's new that's come forward or have students been talking to you about it? Or is this something that you've kind of brought with you? Something that you felt like you would like to change?
Mr. Shells, okay, can I just just address, just because I think it needs a little runway to talk about then some of the things that you've done in in your expertise in this, but we were actually going to look at the schedule back on March 2020. We recognized there have been compromises with lab settings, whether it's AP, agri-science or some of the experiences and not having that ability to really explore some of the topics due to time constraints with the traditional bell schedule. I'm certain some community members are going to get whiplash because they're thinking just a couple of years ago, we had the block schedule and now we're coming back. I'm going to say to you, we're not even looking at a semester by semester course choice. We can't have children going an entire year without mathematics. So this is one in which trying to be thoughtful and recognizing that right now neither schedule meets our demand. And last year, we made an adjustment to do longer periods because we wanted less travel time in the hallway. But that was not an educationally proactive decision, that was a reaction to COVID. So as we now right the ship and now have to make our decisions, it goes into the exploration of which schedule can meet all of the needs, including opportunities for our students to take various courses, to get enough lab time where they can actually conduct experiments, meet C time requirements and more than anything to actually get meaningful learning time that that can happen. That said, Don, this is not your first rodeo. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to you as as you talk about moving this forward and what you've heard from students as you've entered at Shapog.
Sure. Well, actually, I think the most important thing to note on this point is that I have a very strong belief that the process has to have a grassroots flavor to germinate from the bottom up rather from the top down. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't even begin by citing my prior experiences, although I do have some. Because what happens next has to be tailored to Shapog, and I've never been at Shapog before. I know that there have been various iterations of different schedules going back and I do have experience in mediating and leading discussions among stakeholders about moving forward regarding school schedules. But what what's going to happen next won't be a product of preconceived notions that I'm bringing with me from my past, but rather careful listening to what what our stakeholders say. And the the impetus behind this, I would just refer back to the remarks I made at the beginning of my presentation that there are definite shortcomings in this schedule. Mr. Croft summed it up with flexibility, that's a good word. Basically, students don't have as much opportunity as they could if we had some other different configurations. But that said, there are multiple possible configurations that could lead us in a better direction. So what I wanted to do tonight was just forecast an idea that we need to study this, we need to have a spirit of inquiry and look at evidence and make sure the evidence is tailored and the decision is tailored to the evidence that as we find it at Shapog. And I'm looking forward to the discussions that we'll have with our stakeholders.
Thank you, and I I look forward to hearing it as well and maybe being involved, but thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Don. Anybody else? Thank you so much. We look forward to hearing more down the road. So that would be wonderful. And staff vaccination process, that's the
That's me. And we're going to talk about the governor's executive order, 13D and the latest, which is 13G, which came out on Friday. For those who are not aware, a couple of weeks back, the governor put out an executive order mandating that those who are employed by schools, be it private or public, need to be vaccinated for against COVID-19. And in this, they're very specific about how vaccination requirements happen and allows for religious and medical exemptions. So we have been slowly walking through, as you know, we've made vaccines available to our staff as far as nine months ago. But at this point, this is, this is, has some repercussions and we continue to work very closely with legal as we slowly unveil and make certain that we are accounting for our staff's status with vaccination, with their status with exemptions, as well as what are next steps if they do choose not to get vaccinated? If they do decide not to get vaccinated, we do require that they are then to produce a negative COVID test every week. So that is the the requirement in order to continue to work with our students. And this doesn't just fall to school employees, it's actually those who we contract with, who have regular interactions with our students. So again, we we recognize that this is one in which we are trying to make certain that we are following through with the executive order, we're trying to make certain that we are doing our due diligence with our paperwork, making certain that we know and we are giving people all of the information they need in order to make the decisions that makes sense for them. But we also know there's the non-negotiable at this time for the vaccination starting on September 27. So we have collected vaccinations, cards improved from employees. At this point, we are doing some following up. But it will be that, starting the week of the 20th, we will help people find testing sites that if they do decide not to get vaccinated, but then starting on the 27th, when they arrive at work the first day of the of the work week, they will be required to provide that negative COVID test result. We also recognize that there is some significant pressure on districts as far as compliance with this. If we are not in compliance, the fines can be between $1,000 and $10,000 for every incident of non-compliance. So take three staff members, that could be potentially $30,000. And that's at that incident, not the ones going forward. So you would be again and your federal funding is also tied to this. We also know that there are federal guidelines that are also putting that pressure on as well. So I wanted to make certain that this is not being done behind closed doors. I want to make certain that the board is aware of the steps that are taken. I want you to know that we literally do not put out anything in writing right now without having it go through legal. We want to make certain that we are not compromising the district, but we also want to make certain that people are aware of their rights, that people are aware of the choices that they have. And also, if they do decide they want to be vaccinated, that we support all efforts to make that happen. So I I know this is a pretty meaty statement. And so I'm certain that this is a moment in which opening it up for questions, I I may not have the answers, but I certainly want to give people time because I know this has a lot of impact for a lot of our employees and it's also the moment of recognizing that there are some some backlash if we do make other actions, even, you know, whether or not you're talking about labor laws or we're talking about, you know, the vaccination, health and safety. So there's a lot of factors at play. So at this point, I wanted to put it on the floor and see if anybody had any questions.
Megan, I do have a question. This has come up also among state employees with Governor Lamont on the verge of mandating for state employees. And one of the questions that has come up is if you opt to go for the testing every week, is insurance going to pay for that or are you on your own? Do you have any idea or has that come up?
According to our legal team, insurance will not cover if it's not for medical reasons for this testing. And for us right now, if it's refusal for testing, it is at the cost of the employee. We are still continuing to get legal advice regarding medical and religious exemptions.
That's pricey.
John?
Maybe too early to tell, but any projection of the number of staff that won't be in agreement or alignment with the with the vaccination mandate?
So right now, we've gotten those who have provided me religious medical exemptions and the refusal, I've got approximately 10 that have let me know at this point. But now we're going through those who have provided proof of vaccination. So that starts to get me to who may be potential refusals. So that right now is my mystery number. But we are following up and again, wanting to make certain that we give everybody the lead time for for whatever their decision is and the implications thereof. I can tell the board this may have implications regarding bus drivers.
Just, I mean, in terms of the price of testing, I'm assuming that we would utilize the new Milford. Can't they get tested there?
Not necessarily. That would interrupt the school day. Testing is between 9:00 and 10:30. We cannot have staff members who every single week go, which would be about an hour and a half drive, you know, 45 minutes getting there, getting back, cutting in that. So that would be problematic. I can tell you, there was conversation at the state. Some schools do testing on site for their students, staff do not have access to that testing.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Again, this is where I'm going to say to you, I, this is beyond a lot of my, it's beyond my expertise, it's beyond all of my understanding. We rely very heavily right now. I I will tell you, I expect a hefty legal bill this month. Because at this point, we want to make certain that we are not doing any missteps in this process. But I will also say to you, we don't know what the implications are for staffing until we have the entire picture.
Well, thank you, Megan. Does anybody else want to speak? So moving on to action items. Should you consider and if appropriate, approve the addition of the Science Operations Manager position, Megan?
Okay. Do we want to get a motion on the floor before I share or would you prefer that I I share out and then we look for the motion?
I think, just give us a little background.
Absolutely. Again, that probably makes the most sense. Thank you. So as the board is very aware, we do not have a Director of Agri-science. And it is one in which, as we have been building this plane in flight, we recognize the flaws as they're happening. I have had a conversation with Harold Mackin at the state. And we're not the only program who does not have a director. There are some programs that are designed without a director. However, in our infancy and recognizing we really need to have a vision in totality, we recognize one of our shortcomings is really that operations leader. The person who understands the synergy between the pathways, who recognizes the care of animals, how to get our students' SAE hours, how are they providing the opportunities? How are we making this a self-sustaining program? Because right now, I will tell you, everything is laborious. We are doing things in silos because we recognize we have to build the animal pathway and we have to build the food science pathway and we have to build, you know, we have to build the 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 plant sciences and we need to start getting that person who can step back in directing us on what are the best decisions for agriculture? What are those logistics that they can help design and support? And so I provided in the packet for the board the proposal, which included the job description for this operations manager. And I will tell the board in a very transparent way, we have done the posting for a projected position. We have found somebody who right now is ticking all of the boxes for this. So we put the cart before the horse because we also recognize the urgency. We have had some students who are, have left the program for various reasons. Some of it is also because they need somebody who's going to help them get some of their SAE hours week after week and is helping through how do you get those hours right here on the Shapog campus? How are we maintaining our Shapog campus? And getting somebody who really knows this, who can tie all of these efforts together is incredibly important right now in this program. It's important that we have, what is that link? And I think that link is going to come from this position. So I I am asking the board and I will say to you with urgency, asking the board for this position to be created.
So let's make a motion. Somebody like to move?
I'd like to motion, please.
Second? A second? Discussion? Anybody like to chime in? Chime, John?
Yeah, um, I noticed in the job description, there's no no category for potential recruitment activity. So you're saying you're shaking your head no?
Yeah, no, that would not be part of this person's role. This person, okay.
I know that from year to year that I mean, you were obviously involved, the principal was obviously involved. I don't know, I think once it gets underway, who better to recruit than the operations manager? But anyway, that's your decision.
Well, I I appreciate it and I I think the feedback is good. I think Well, I I appreciate it and I I think the feedback is good. I think recruiting is not what I'm worried about. I I think that. The team that they have right now, who goes out, they utilize our students and Mike Boucher does a a wonderful presentation. He works with the Chappagh administration. We get a lot of students who are coming in. My concern right now is keeping those students who come in. And that comes down to, once they experience the program, if the program feels disjointed. If they don't see purpose in what they're doing in their experience day to day. They lose interest and we lose students. And so for me, this is, this is the business move that we need to make.
Mary?
Um, I agree with Megan. We need to move on this right away. I've actually had some. I I live in the middle of April Farm and Strawberry Farm and. They've talked to me about asking me to get a an operations manager underway. So that they could get the help that they need at their farms from our students so they can get. They can staff and and they want to be able to to use our students. Because they think that that's the best way for them to get an education and them to get the help. And I think it's a a good marriage. So others than that, as Megan says, we want to make sure that we were consistent in in. Moving from one stage to another in the different pathways and this is the only way to do it. So I encourage everybody to vote yes.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? Alex?
Yeah, I have a question. Why only four 20 hours per week?
Um, right now, we recognize that this is a position that. We have other things that are in place for, I think we are able to make do with this. Eventually, if this becomes a director position, the other half would be a teaching load. So we definitely know that this part of the operations is a part-time position. To be very honest, it also means that when I'm looking at FTEs, I did not budget for this position. I do not have benefits for this position. So there's certainly things that I need to be fiscally responsible. I don't want to put ourselves in a corner. We do not make decisions just based on finances alone. When I look at what the other half of this position is typically in other districts, the other half is teaching. I'm all set with my teaching staff this year. It's the operations part, which is.
So this may. Grow into a 40-hour week down the road with teaching.
If if we decide to take this on as a director opportunity, yes.
Do you, Alex? Anybody else?
I think Lisa's hand is up.
Yeah, I am. Um, so I support this 100%. The program as wonderful it is, it definitely has its limitations and I see that because my daughter is a part of it. And everything that Megan is talking about from the SAE hours, all of the logistics. It's really difficult for these students and and to to have the teachers work on this on top of of a full course load. It's been a challenge and I I know from the very beginning when we organized this program. Megan, you've always hoped that there was going to be somebody kind of as a director for this. So. I support it 100% and I I just see it firsthand. I think that this would make the program. From, you know, better to great. So I I definitely support it.
Great. Thank you.
And and just to to share with the board, you know, this year, the agri-science program. Teresa DeBrito is directly supporting. Mike Croft is directly supporting. We we are putting a lot. Of additional supports in place. And so again, having that person who has a strong, and when I say to you. Strong agricultural background, who can pull it all together, who sees the events, who's able to network. Who already knows the players and the games and the farms and everything else and can invite opportunities. That means our teachers can then exploit those opportunities through experiences for our children and that's what our teachers will be able to do. Is focus on those lessons and experiences within the classroom to really push the program forward.
Anybody else would like to speak? I actually would just, I agree with Lisa and Mary. I I think that this is a a no-brainer and it's been a long time coming. And it's interesting too, because I didn't mention this before in my report, but there was just a really wonderful article in the News Times yesterday. About Chappagh's regional agri-science program triples in size. And has a new look. And I just think here we have such an amazing program and we have so many wonderful opportunities to. Promote it and I just think it's sort of the ribbon that, you know, the the tie, the bow around the whole package and I I think that. An operations manager is long overdue, so.
And just to also accentuate that, I don't know if everybody else also saw the news article highlighting our girls cross-country team.
Yeah.
13 runners, eight different towns. How beautiful. That's what Chappagh is. Different towns are our runners on the girls' cross-country team, coming together, unifying. It is an amazing thing. And so we want to make certain that we're giving them that incomplete total package experience. John, I'm not worried about promoting this. I'm not worried about the promises. I'm worried about delivering on them and that's why I keep this position.
Absolutely. Um, anybody else would like to speak?
One more thing, yeah. I don't know if I should say this or I know in your weekly update, you noted that someone had been identified. As the manager. Is that still? The reality of the situation or are you still looking?
Nope, I I've got the person, but I would not move forward with the offer until I had the board's approval. So this is where I'm saying. Typically, board members, I am that rule follower. This one, I I knew that we needed to cast the net, see what we have, but. In order to move forward on it, I I would like to have the board's approval.
Okay.
Have him show up or her show up for work tomorrow.
The best answer, Alex.
Good, Alex. That was very good. So um, now we get to make them, now we get to vote. So here we go. So all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Anyone opposed? Oh, sorry, my hands. Anyone abstain?
I'm going to abstain until I know the identity of the person.
So we have nine in favor and one abstention.
It passes.
Passes. Great news.
Thank you all very much. Very, very appreciated.
Okay, so now we get to adjourn.
And you made it under two hours.